Is that okay for everybody? Ready to go? Already? Okay. Staff? I don't know if I have to push anything for recording or if we are already recording.
We're recording.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. So today is September 24, 2024. Madison, Wisconsin. And I'm calling this meeting of the Common Council Executive Committee to order. So staff, will you please do a call roll?
President Vigro Cole?
Here.
Vice President Duncan?
Here.
Alder Govender Rajan? Alder Conklin?
Present.
Alder Martinez Rutherford? Alder Uguere?
Here.
Alder Harrington McKinney?
I'm present.
Alder Curry? You have quorum.
Thank you, Karen. So the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Any questions about the minutes? From last council meeting? From last executive committee meeting? I don't see any hands raised. So? A motion to approve them?
Second.
Okay. So is there any objection or recording unanimous vote in support of the minutes? No hands raised, so moving on. That's the minutes are approved. So is there any public comment?
There are no registrants.
Thank you so much. So we move on to disclosures and recusals. Members of the body should make any required disclosures or recusals under the City Ethics Code. Are there any disclosures or recusals? I don't see any. So we'll move on. And Karen? Alder Martinez just arrived. So if you want to mark it in, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that takes us to the first item on the agenda. Which is, I'm getting to the agenda. Where is the agenda? Oh, I found it. Okay. The first item on the agenda is Legistar 84390, Accepting the 2024 Agency Annual Surveillance Technology Reports for the 2023 Calendar Year. A motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Could I have a second? Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. So with that said, do we have any questions? Or staff, do you have any summaries to provide? Or any questions that the body may have for staff about this report? We get it every year and the council office puts it together. I don't see any hands raised. Just wanted to say thank you to staff for working on that. I know it's kind of a little bit of a painful process that we should continue to look into improve. But we appreciate you guys building that report. So? Any discussion on this item? Okay. No hands raised? Any objection to record unanimous vote in favor of the report? See not objections. We accept that report. The next item on the agenda is Legistar 85330, Social Media Considerations for Alders. A motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Can I have a second? And Martinez? Second? Thank you. Is there a staff presentation on this? A quick update?
Yes, I believe that Larissa Banuelos is able to give a bit of an overview of the document. I'll just say a couple of words and then I can hand it over to her. So this document should look familiar to everyone because it is something that we also provide. We created it last year and sent it out last year to help folks think about their social media use, especially when campaign season was ramping up. And so Larissa worked with quite a bit in depth with the city attorney's office to get this created and their best practices and guidelines for social media use for Alders to consider. And this is really to cover, just to help Alders know what to do, what they can do on social media broadly with their own, with the accounts that they create. Right? So Larissa, how about I give the floor over to you for a minute? And then we can see if folks have questions.
The key takeaways of this document is differentiating between an official district account and then a personal page and a campaign page. There are certain rules regarding the difference between the two and managing a social media account as an elected official and then as a, and then in your own personal use. So that really is, it does cover the 50-piece rule and how that applies to that as well. But yeah, I'll open it up for questions.
Alder Harrington McKinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Larissa, I read it a couple of times and probably because I'm not as efficient with social media. I was kind of confused. Was there a need to have this to move forward? Did something precipitate this having to be, you know, in this format? I don't need names, but were there instances that brought this to needing to happen? I guess that's what I'm asking.
Sure. As we're approaching election season, it's really important to differentiate between your personal accounts and your official city district. So anything where you're doing, managing council business or sharing council business on, that can be seen as an official district account. It can also be seen as an account where you're using city resources to do that. So we want to make sure that you're not using city resources in order to help promote your campaign, if that makes sense. I may have jumbled that up a little bit.
And I can jump in here real quick, too. I'm not aware of anything that preceded anything that sort of prompted this, other than we're getting closer and closer to campaign season. And we got it together last year before campaign season because we wanted folks to understand, because there aren't any real, it's not clear cut and it's confusing for folks. And so we thought it would be nice to have some resources, right? And you know, we've been building up our resources and we continue to do so to help Alders navigate this very complicated landscape of all these different aspects. And so the other thing that actually when we were working on, if you remember, we've also been working for quite a while now on getting together a policy for city-created Alder Facebook pages. And we did the pilot last year, if you remember. And that also had us thinking. When we were doing this last year, we were thinking about the pilot. But we're like, okay, but Alders don't have to. We don't have the city-created process up yet. And Alders don't have to use a city-created Facebook page for Aldering. So do we have any guidance? Do we have any suggestions? Do we have any help for them? You know? And so that was the genesis of this, was to be like, let's try to give them some help while we still work out all the details of, well, if the city creates a Facebook page for an Alder, how does that work? While we're working all that out, we didn't want to leave you completely with nothing. So that's how we created this document that you have in front of you. That was last year. And the only reason it's coming up again is because I'm feeling the clock is ticking. And Larissa and I think we're both in that same where we're like, December is going to be here before we know it. And it's one of several things we're working on. I was going to talk about it a little bit in my update. But we're working on getting y'all some more in-depth resources about how to navigate campaign season. One thing that's been on my mind is that with the new staggered terms, we're going to be, half the council is going to be campaigning forever now. I mean, every year, you know what I mean? It won't be a two-year cycle anymore. I mean, it will be, but half of you will be, if you're running, you're going to be running every year. So I'm feeling kind of the weight of that as well. And wanting to get our ducks in a row a bit so that once that starts, you know, it's just going to be constant. And we want to be able to give you materials. So that's kind of the longer backstory.
Can I have a follow-up? And you've done such a phenomenal job with the onboarding. I just hats off. I'm so pleased with where the onboarding has gone from when I was elected in 2015 and what it looks like today. Is this something that could have, would be incorporated in the onboarding? You know, there is a need for it, but I'm just wondering, because, you know, it seems early in the game and I don't know if it's tweaked yet. But absolutely, is this, can this be a part of the ongoing? And then to run it through that and then to have a firmer understanding and like, okay, this worked, this not worked. Now we're ready to really make it into a resolution. So I guess that's my ask, is that about the onboarding possibility?
Absolutely. I'll say a couple of words and I'll hand it over to Larissa. Yes, Larissa, it is part of onboarding. Larissa does have a couple pieces to her particular part of the onboarding. And we're talking about more ways to build out even more communications-related onboarding and so on. Larissa, would you like to say a couple of words about that?
Yeah, I do think that training is something that needs to be developed eventually. I think right now we are just, so social media is obviously fairly new. What we're basing our guidance and knowledge on are existing bar cases. But with the ever-involvement and the new features that come out, it's, it really is hard to tell how this will affect or violate any future rules moving forward. However, that's why we're focusing on Facebook right now. Facebook still remains one of the best social media platforms for government use, government use in particular. Because the features that are currently on it just, it contributes to being able to build communities in a way that is just accessible for most people. So I think we can, I think we can continue to formulate, you know, what is permissible content? What is prohibited content? Also, what is? I just had it. What are the features that Alders can utilize of Facebook that just makes it such an accessible resource? So definitely think that training should be developed in the meantime. But in the meantime, I think as long as we can start, as long as we can start at step one, then go to step two, we're just not there yet for training. However, again, I am happy to sit down with anyone and go over communications tools that are available to Alders.
And I want to also just reaffirm that Larissa does meet with the new Alders. And also you may have noticed in your emails, she does reach out. She tries to reach out regularly to folks to bring in, to have conversations, consultations. And so she's going to continue to do that. And we're, I know, like, it's tomorrow. April's tomorrow. It feels like tomorrow to me. But we're going to be pivoting this fall to really doing more tweaks and improvements and additions to the onboarding materials that we have. So this communications training is definitely in our, on our radar. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Madison? Wait, 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 wait.
All righty. Thank you. So thank you for y'all's work on this. I just have, I think, a quick question, just so I can clarify for myself. On the document, on page one, where kind of in the middle, it says, "At all times, Alder's social media accounts are considered a city resource if one or more of the following are true." The fourth bullet point, which I think this is me, says, "The social media account was used initially as a campaign account, but then used to conduct Alder slash city business after being elected." So I should more than likely create an Alder-specific account that is not my, because both, I don't have like the official city, you know, provided account. These are just my personal pages. So it's probably best practice that I go and create a, you know, Alder District 17 account, for example, where there's a clear separation. Is that what you're implying here?
Yes, please. Yeah.
Larissa said, "please." Okay. I will do it tonight.
Good question. Good question.
Thank you. I think one of the, I think one of the issues that Alders might have with that is building a following up again. And that's one of the reasons why we proposed those official district accounts through the Office of the Common Council. So that way each Alder can help build a diverse crowd depending on who they reach. Everyone has their own, you know, specialty and those who they reach. So that is, again, one of the reasons why we try to push for those official district accounts created by the Office of the Common Council. But also, yeah, Sabrina, I, you know, I would love for you to create one specifically for your district. So thanks.
So? Can we still get an official one or is it not like recommended? Or that was just like the pilot? I think it was a pilot.
Go ahead, Larissa.
Yeah, I recommended creating official district accounts for every district.
Oh, so I can still get an official one?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I'll send you an email. It's going to make you crazy. Okay.
And I think where we're at was, I think we need to bring the, I think because what the previous CCEC passed or the council passed when they did the council communication tools was a draft policy. And so I know, Larissa, you've been working really a lot on that, improvements to that policy and updates to that policy. So that will come back in front of CCEC at some point, hopefully sooner rather than later, so that folks can kind of see what's been updated since. Because it's been a few years and like Larissa said, there's a lot of changes in the case law that can impact kind of what we can do and can't do. So, but in any case, creating a, I think separation is really helpful. It's also helpful for all of you. It's also helpful for constituents so that they know exactly what they're looking at. Are they looking at a campaign page? Are they looking at a personal page? Are they looking at an Alder page? Right? And that is, it helps you. It helps them. It also helps with record-keeping. It's why we strongly recommend it, even if you create it on your own. Because I think clarity is everybody's friend, I think, in these cases.
Alder Govender Rajan?
Thank you. This might be a question for Attorney Haas. But can we get a distinction between what campaigning is and then what city business is? Because a lot of my communication, like I don't use my blog, for example, because students will never, ever, ever check my blog. I use Instagram. And like, the information I share is, sometimes it's a statement on something that happened on campus. Sometimes it's seeking engagement on something coming to plan commission. Sometimes it's, here's a bus detour. Is that, would you consider that city business or just like public information out there?
I think those would be, if you're using it to communicate as an Alder, then it would be considered city business and, you know, subject to any public records requests. There's no, you can certainly put that on your campaign account if you want to. But it would likely be considered a communication from you as an Alder. And, you know, campaign purposes are, campaign expenditures are used for political purposes, which is basically advocating for a vote or requesting support. And that can be pretty broad. But I think that's why the council staff is suggesting to try to have a separate campaign account that's completely, you know, you can put whatever you want on there. And if you have a separate official account, then the public records requests don't have to concern themselves with your campaign account.
I have the two. Okay, great. Thank you.
Alder Harrington McKinney?
Thank you, Chair. This is just a follow-up. I remember when I first became an Alder and Larissa, you were very helpful. The previous Alder had an account with the private password and it was difficult to, you know, access what was in there. And so I think it is a better idea to have an account that is set up through the council office. And that way, when there is a change, you know, you still have access to that. Because it was very difficult for me to access the previous Alder's account, which was city business because it was password-protected. And so I guess I'm just saying that, yes, we're moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't see any other hands up on this topic. I do want to say once again, thank you to Larissa specifically for all the work put into this document. I know that started last year and we keep on refining it. And just I guess the simplest, to summarize this whole thing here, is just that separation between the two type of business. Like, I don't want to have to provide public records from my personal anything. So just, this is why I keep my things separate. So you can, you know, so at the end of the day, it really is, it's based on, it may seem okay, but it may not seem okay for other people. And just avoid, it's best if we just have best practices. And I think this document helped us do that. So this is not an item for approval or anything. I shouldn't even ask for a vote to get in. It's just a review of an internal policy. With that said, unless there's any other questions, I'm going to go ahead and move to the next item. I don't see any hands. Okay? So the next item on the agenda, thank you again, Larissa and Karen. The next item on the agenda is also an informational item. This is Legistar 83517, Alder Budget Engagement Events. And for this one, the highlight of it is the collection of questions that we received through the engagements and the answers that were provided by staff, which I hope you guys find that extremely useful to build blogs and to answer questions to your constituents. With that said, maybe Karen, are you going to speak on this item? I don't know if you want to share the screen or what you want to do. But yes, please. Thank you.
Yes. Let me see about sharing the screen. It may be small, but let me try. It's attached to the item as well in Legistar, which might also be helpful. And I have Isaac Mathias, our legislative analyst, here with me to talk a bit more about what we've been up to. So what you have in this document is an in-depth, frequently asked questions document that we received from questions that we received. If you remember, in the budget engagement events, we had a period of time where folks were able to write on note cards all the different questions that they had. And if they'd like follow-up, in case we didn't get to it, or they just would like to have, you know, follow-up with the city, they would write their email address. And then with Dave Schmidke and Christine Coe and some other staff help, I worked through, I responded to each of those emails that provided us with questions and provided their emails. And so what you have here is basically what I would call a compendium of the most commonly asked questions. There were quite a lot of similarities and themes and how the staff then answered those questions. So you have some information where you can use it for answering similar questions yourself. You could use it for some research, identifying things that you'd like to ask staff more about, for example. It's got topics and subtopics. So you have a bit of a sense of what is this question asking about? So when you're reviewing it quickly, you can get a bit of a sense. And this document then kind of is kind of the output, the usable tool, I guess, that comes out of all the work that we were doing in the note cards. Isaac, you might want to have a little bit to say about this and also a little bit to say about the report, the big report, which is almost done. But it's a bit of a, it's turned out to be quite an undertaking to report out on everything that, all the feedback that we got across the five events. It's taking us a minute. So Isaac, would you like to say a couple of words? Or?
Yeah. The thing I'd add about the kind of frequently asked questions is you can also use it when a constituent asks you a question. I don't know. The last thing I saw was like, what are the costs of North-South BRT? And we have topic BRT, subtopic North-South. So when a constituent asks you a question, you can just go in to this and be like, I wonder if this frequently asked questions has an answer to it already? So you can just go in and kind of copy and paste with this information that we have you. Hopefully, it makes your life easier in responding to the many questions I'm sure y'all are getting about the budget. And will probably increase over the next couple of weeks. And yeah, about the kind of overall report, Karen and I are plugging away at it. It's been kind of months of writing. We're at over 80 pages right now and growing and over 20,000 words. So it's, yeah, it's been a lift and we're getting through it. But I think we're kind of seeing the light at the end of the tunnel, going through some edits and adding some last couple of things and hoping to get it out to y'all pretty soon. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions about the report? About the, yeah, the report? Again, I just really want to encourage all of you to take a look at it, go through the questions. You probably already know the answer. Oops. Sorry. I'm back. I'm going to have to repeat that. Again, I just want to encourage everybody to take a look at it, to go through the questions and answers. You probably by now should know the answers that are there, might know the answers or whatever. But I have to say, on reviewing the report before we put it on the agenda, there were things that, you're going to find things you're going to learn. So, and if you're learning something new, that's just more information for you to share with your constituents. And you can share the link from Legistar in your blogs or you can take subsets of data and build a blog with that information. So I think it covers a lot of the questions that were asked. And there's a lot of information there. So it was hard to summarize it in a way that is easy to digest. So I'm going to have to say, just go through it. You'll control fine if you want to look for keywords and get through it. So please use it. I find it very useful. No questions? Okay, good. So with that said, I'm just going to go ahead and move. Thank you, Isaac and Karen. Really appreciate your work on that. And to all the city staff that contributed to get the answers for us. A lot of gratitude there. So item five, Legistar 83516, Alder Committee Updates. I want to know if you have any updates. If you don't, I have a couple. But I wait and see if you have anything for me or for us. Okay? So I don't see any hands raised, but I got a couple of Legistar items that I really highly recommend for us to follow through the for us to follow through the committee process. I think there's some questions that are being, that are rumbling around and we definitely should be prepared to, to answer those. Legistar 85091, the TDM, which is the Transportation Demand Management. There are changes that were made to that. There's changes that are being routed to that policy. And it went to Plan Commission yesterday, so you can go ahead and watch that meeting. And I believe the next stop on that will be Transportation Commission. And then Legistar 85045, which is the Southwest Area Plan, Public Participation Plan. For that one, it's already been routed. I think it also was in Plan Commission yesterday. I'm sure it will come to parks and everywhere else, so please make sure to catch it wherever you can. I think they, I just want to point out that this is the time now. Now is the time for alders to, to focus on the outreach, on the outreach, the outreach participation plan that they're putting together. So we need to make sure, we need to ensure that we have the enough resources to do the outreach and we should be discussing that now. And based on, on our financial state at this moment, we should be giving staff direction on who to prioritize when we're doing community outreach. The time to complain about community outreach, what wasn't done, who didn't get it. Honestly, hopefully it's not six months, six months down the road when, when we bring the plan for approval. So this is an opportunity, lessons learned from the West Area Plan, an opportunity for us to actually look at the outreach, the outreach participation plan and then make assessments on, do you need more funding? Do we need to, to prioritize certain populations? What do we need staff to do to support the plans? So that's Legistar 85045 and Legistar 85091, the TDM changes and the Southwest Area Plan. Well, and I think it's the other plan. There's two plans going at the same time. The East Plan, right, Jael?
Southeast.
Southeast Area Plan. So yes, there's two plans going around. I'm sorry, I only wrote the number for one. Yeah, so if you have any questions about anything else, that's all I have. If you want to share any, anything else happening in your committees, this is the time. Don't see any hands. So the last, the next item on the agenda then is 81382, which is the Council Office Updates. Karen?
Yes, I will share. I sent to you all on, all alders on email. I'm virtual today, so you don't have a physical copy on your desk tonight. One moment, trying to. Okay, hopefully that, are you able to see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. So a couple of important things here. And then I want to give you a little bit of a, a little highlight of what Isaac and I have been up to the last couple of days. But the big thing is, so you all know and remember that the CCB renovations have been going on for quite a while and that our office was included with the first floor renovations. So they are, they've given us a move-in date, crossing fingers, and it is October 10th. So we will be moving up to room 505 CCB, so just one more floor up. And so folks may, we may be disrupted on Thursday, the 10th, because everything will be in, in process and folks will be, will be moving up and reconnecting everything and making sure that it works. And, and so, you know, bear, bear with us. Your city access cards, your ID cards that we have for you, those will have access to the new office door on them. There's a very nice alder lounge where your mailbox will, where your mailboxes will be. There's a conference room, excuse me. And so make sure you have your IDs. They're very useful. I know some folks may need to find them. So please identify them because your, you'll have, so you have two things. You have your, your ID, your city ID, that's your picture ID. That's where your, that's where the, the access, that's what you'll use to access our office door. However, to, to still get into the building from the basement and to get into the, the garage or to get in, you know, up the elevator after hours, that's your plain white county access card. So you, you still need those two cards that we gave you. But the, the only difference is that the, the city card is where your access to our office will be. And so anyway, just, I wanted to give you that big news. We've been waiting a while. You may have heard through the grapevine that the windows, the county contract to put in the windows has kind of been a, been a fits and starts. And so they didn't want to give us, the city facilities engineering didn't want to give us a move-in date until they were more confident that, that it was accurate. So we did get that. Oh, I see Alder Conklin's got her hand raised about this, I think. So maybe I'll just take the question now.
Um, thank you, Karen. It is a question about this because I was in the office yesterday and nobody was in there. So are you guys out of the office right now currently or are you guys in a different location?
No, we're still in the office. Debbie was, I'm not sure what time you came in yesterday, but Debbie was covering for Isaac. Isaac's out, out of town with me at a conference right now. So Debbie was covering. So I'm not sure. Maybe she had stepped out to go to First Class Mailers. But we're still in, we're in 417 until the 10th.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay. And then, as I mentioned, Isaac and I are at the International City County Managers Association in Pittsburgh. We come back tomorrow evening. And I, I've been going to sessions that focus a lot on things like improving training for elected officials, figuring out what kind of tools and resources they need and how to improve relations, how to, how to improve relations amongst folks on a council, between staff and council and also, you know, improving community engagement and conversation, sort of, you know, relations between residents and, and council. So, because as you know, something I hear quite often from alders are things like, we need more resources for helping us, you know, do the job. We need more tools for things like emotional intelligence and abilities to sort of, you know, work with so many people, whether that's your constituents, your peers or staff, so many people who are wildly different from one another and sort of, you know, how to sort of do that work effectively. And so that's what I've been spending my time on. Isaac, Isaac maybe can speak a little bit too, or you can ask him about the things that he's been spending his time on. But I always find this conference to be helpful because it's, it's all folks who work for cities and counties in, directly with the electeds. And so folks have a lot of different thoughts about ways, you know, I've got some resources, for example, from the city of Boulder on what kind of communications training they provide to their electeds. And I'm very excited because they have it in a drive that we can access and we can learn from. So I always, I always appreciate this opportunity to really get a good sense of best practices, what I could be doing, what I should be doing, problem solving, that sort of thing. Isaac, do you have anything you want to say briefly before I move on?
Yeah, I can jump in. I, some of the ones that I've been prioritizing going, the different sessions that I've been prioritizing going to have really been around, data collection, data analysis and kind of specifically how we collect and analyze data that we receive from the public. It's felt really, really applicable to this kind of big budget engagement event report that we've been working on. And if we continue doing these events in the future, how we can kind of improve those events, improve the data that we receive, then hopefully make the reports even more informative moving forward, but also kind of how that can extend to other projects in the future as well. And yeah, I think similar to Karen, I found this conference to be really informative, really, really, really interesting. And it's been cool to meet all the folks at different, different governments who interact with electeds all the time and kind of seeing the differences between their cities and counties compared to us and their structures and whatnot. And so, yeah.
Awesome. And then a couple more notes about folks who are going to be out. Also, Liz and Larissa are going to the YWCA Summit this, later this week. So just, they may be delayed in responding because they're there, but Isaac and I will be back on Thursday and Friday. So you'll be able to get ahold of us faster. And then I just have some reminders, some folks going out of, you know, going out of the country. If you do go out of the country, please think ahead. Plan ahead to get IT information. They, they'll set you up to be able to access your, your, if you want to. Oops. I think I deleted myself. Oh, there I am. They'll set up your email so that you'll be able to access your, your login, your city, if you'd like to, your city accounts abroad. And then I, I wanted to give a couple of project updates. Isaac and I have already talked about our budget event analysis and reporting. We have the, the compendium that you've received, the frequently asked questions tonight. And then, as Isaac mentioned, we're still chipping away at the report, going through, doing edits, improving the readability and the visuals because there's just a lot of information. So we're trying to make it so that you all can skim it and kind of pick up the big picture things on the graphs. And then you can look in a little bit deeper to find some examples and then you can look even deeper to find out the, the trends that like, the things that we found in each, each event. I think it's important to put in a caveat and, and again, if Isaac wants to, to jump in on this, a caveat that points out that we got a wide range of, of information and feedback. And it wasn't all easily categorizable, right? So, yeah, Isaac, do you want to say anything about that? Just that folks need to kind of keep that in mind as they're reading through everything.
Yeah, there's, for kind of every question that we have, there's a category of other where some are relevant to the question that we asked and are just kind of not easily fit into any category. And there's lots of responses that are not relevant to the questions we asked and kind of just felt like getting things off people's chests. And so it, it made the data analysis interesting because there's kind of this outlier in the amount of like non-responses, others. And then you're kind of looking at everything that is relevant. And there is a lot of stuff that's really relevant to the questions we ask, but those also are kind of spread out across a wide range of categories. And so, yeah, I don't know. I've found it very interesting to dig through and I hope y'all do also. But yeah, it's a keep in mind, I don't know, I think there's kind of lots of caveats in, in this data that we received because it's from, oh, like, there's lots of, there's quite a range of responses. There's human error in both kind of writing these. A lot of people's handwriting was really difficult to read. So there's some that are like, we only have parts of responses. There's other people that just kind of wrote single word responses. So you don't really know the directionality of what they're saying to a question. They like state of service and you don't know if they're saying that this thing is great and the best thing ever or that they hate it. And so it's interesting. And I, I think it's going to be really useful and valuable, but there are lots of things to keep in mind as you kind of sift through what, what we give you. So.
And I do have to say, I'm just really excited that we have a problem of too much information as opposed to not enough. That's kind of a, I know, maybe that's just me being whatever, but like, I like that. I, I think that the fact that we had so much engagement and we had, I just, I'm very pleased, even though it's not perfect and obviously we're not a scientific enterprise, you know, we're not a research department. However, I think it is still going to be quite useful and I'm very proud of, of the whole endeavor. So I have, I really can't help it. I really have. Okay, moving forward, so we talked about, I mentioned that we're also working on campaign season guidelines. I, I spoke a little bit about that. Larissa's working hard on that. And we have, we're working with the attorney's office, of course, to make sure that these are correct before we're sending them out to you. So we're still on that. It's on my plate of things I need to get moving on. And then I wanted to give some other good news, which is that we've done, we've really made a lot of progress in cross-training our staff and documenting office practices, which is really important to us. Oh, my screen sharing is paused. Is it? Okay. Is it still sharing? I don't know. So sorry.
It's still sharing.
Okay. I wonder why I said that. All right. It's making me nervous. I'm gonna stop. Okay. Anyway. And, and then, so I'm very excited about this. And staff has been working on standard operating procedures so that things are documented in case we, you know, in case we need them. Very, I'm very pleased. I know that it's not the most fun thing to do, to sit and document the thing that you do every day. That's not great, but it's so useful. And some of you in here a minute know that we have gone through a lot of turnover in the past and having documents and cross-training really, really, really helps kind of protect us and, and let us keep you, keep everything moving, right? And, and while we go through turnover. So I'm really excited about that. And then, as I mentioned a minute, a bit ago, Alder onboarding preparation, I'm going to, I, I told folks I really want to start pivoting to thinking about building out the program, thinking about the timing of things, materials and, and putting a lot of effort into that. So once we close the book on the budget report, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, crossing fingers, then I'll be able to pivot to thinking more deep, you know, in more detail about that as well as continuing to document some of our processes and procedures, things that we all do, but never, no one's ever really written down or, or we have some old, some old things that are written down, but maybe they need to be updated and refined and so on and so forth. So I really want to spend time this fall digging into that. Those are my main updates. And then I have two trainings that I highlighted, How to Run Effective Meetings and Values-Based Leadership. This is one of two classes offer in this topic. And I think that it's, it, it's a nice, it shows a nice combination of things. One, some tips and tricks for getting your efficient, you know, thinking about how to have efficient meetings, which is, I think, a real useful thing for everybody. I think you can always pick up something, even if you run a really tight meeting. And then, and then a, a little bit about the introspective piece. So this is one thing that I've really found in this conference. It just reminds me that honestly, the introspective piece, the self-awareness piece, the self-evaluation piece is so critical to, to the work we all do here. Because in so many ways, our work is relational. That's true for you all as well as for us. And I think sometimes we put the emphasis on the technical expertise, which is super, super important and I, I absolutely do not want to minimize technical expertise. But I think sometimes we don't give the interpersonal aspects of things or that developing those skills as much perhaps priority or investment maybe as we do to the technical skills. So I, I'm going to keep bringing the, the trainings to you and, and if you take a training, I want to hear how it goes. Because if we should build a custom session after you go and you say, this was the most amazing training, let's, let's think about building a custom session for alders, for example. I, I would like to keep hearing, hearing from you as you do. So that's a little bit of why I keep bringing up training, like everything I, I do. I think it's really valuable because one of the ways we can support you is to help giving you resources and tools so you can develop those things. Because, you know, it's, it's hard work we do here. And, and so, anyway, that is, that's, that's what I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Any questions for Karen or Isaac? Again, thank you both for the work on, on, for the work that you guys do on, on the council office and super excited that we have, that we are developing or continue to develop procedures that we can actually point to. So having that institutional knowledge on paper and be able to repeat processes, I mean, it's, it's ideal. And I, I, I'm a big believer of that, so I really appreciate it. You know, like, I mean, again, when, every time something comes up, I'm like, okay, is that written down? And that's my, my, my quick thing to go on. If it's not written down, we be making sure, we are making sure that. we are making sure that we actually write a procedure that we can, that it stays with the council and it doesn't go out the door when someone decides to move on to a different, to a different job. So I really, really appreciate that. I don't see any other hands up. I also want to add that it is the Hispanic Heritage Month. I personally celebrate my heritage every day. So it doesn't, doesn't have much impact on me, but I wanted to let you know, I put a blog out earlier today with a bunch of links of activities happening around the city, the Madison Children's Museum, the Madison Public Library, UW Students Affairs and Destination Madison have good posting and places to be. So please join the celebration and learn more about the Hispanic Latina, Latinx culture. So with that said, I don't have anything else. I don't see any other hands. A motion to adjourn, please. Okay, Martinez, second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, President Figaro Cole.
Did I miss something?
Future agenda items? I'm sorry, I might have missed it.
Oh, I'm sorry, future agenda items. Oh, okay. So let's move on. You see, I thought it was perfect this time, but no, always something behind. Okay, so the next agenda item, which I don't have in front of me anymore, let me see if I can find it. Oh, there you go. 78125. If you have any future agenda items that you want to add, please go ahead and do so. Otherwise, email Karen and we'll discuss with you how to get them, you know, what information we need to get them on the agenda. Anybody? Any hands? Don't see any hands on that either. So again, now we had a motion to adjourn by Elder Duncan and second by Elder Martinez. Any objection on recording unanimous vote for adjournment? I don't see any objections, so the meeting is adjourned.